I'd like to call the meeting to our order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sorel?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Councilor Grasso?
Here.
Councilor Farini?
Here.
Councilor Marshawn?
Very here.
Councilor Penelakis?
Here.
Councilor Hines?
Here.
Councilor Reynold?
Here.
Councilor Whitehouse?
I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer and then Councilor Ned Reynold will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by God Bless America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God Bless America. We have two proclamations this evening. The first one, Councilor Hines will read regarding the Friendship Tall Ship which he attended, he represented me Friday. Thank you, John. John?
Thank you. The proclamation for the Friendship Week, the Tall Sail Ship. A proclamation whereas the Piscataquoddy Maritime Commission is committed to preserving the maritime history of the seacoast and whereas today marks the beginning of a visit by the Tall Ship Friendship, a faithful replica of a three-masted merchant ship built in seventeen ninety-seven in Salem, Massachusetts that made fifteen voyages around the world. Whereas the city of Portsmouth has welcomed many a tall ship to its shores from the earliest days of American history and is grateful to the Piscataquoddy Maritime Commission for honoring this heritage and whereas the city also extends its appreciation to the other community and governmental organizations including New Hampshire's Division of Ports and Harbors that have made this visit possible. And whereas we salute two Portsmouth area citizens and the Maritime Commission leaders, Jenny McBride and Jim Woodbridge for their success in educating our youth by bringing tall ships to Portsmouth and whereas we invite the Friendship Captain and crew to enjoy our New England hospitality in our city of the open door. Now therefore I Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, join with the City Council and all of the citizens of Portsmouth in greeting this beautiful reminder of our long history as a shipbuilding and seaport town and proclaim August thirteenth to the sixteenth, two thousand and four, as Friendship Weekend and encourage all residents and visitors to Portsmouth to tour the Friendship, to learn more about our maritime history. Given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this thirteenth day of August two thousand and four, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor.
Thank you, John. We have a young reporter sitting up in the press box that had the honor to ride up on the ship and Michael, did you get seasick? Did you have a good time? Good, good. Now we're down to the proclamation and the proclamation is in order of Dot Von Day of Remembrance who we all love there very, very dearly on September nineteenth, two thousand and four and I'm going to ask the Assistant Mayor Alec Hanson to read it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council, Chamber of City Hall, Portsmouth, Hampshire proclamation whereas Miss Dorothy Vaughn, the esteemed librarian, historian, and visionary recently passed away at the age of ninety-nine and whereas during her long and productive life, Miss Vaughn had an immense influence on our community and an untold number of our citizens and whereas her lifelong campaign to safeguard our past led to the preservation of Strawberry Bank, the Tobias Lear House, Wentworth Gardner House, and numerous other historic treasures in our city and whereas Miss Vaughn's love of history is largely responsible for ensuring that future generations enjoy the unique character of our beautiful and historic city of Portsmouth and whereas she herself was a historic treasure of our community who contributed countless hours to our youth as a Girl Scout leader and faithful public servant for fifty-four years who rose through the ranks to become head librarian. Now therefore I Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, do join with the members of the City Council in proclaiming September nineteenth, two thousand and four, which would have been the eve of her one-hundredth birthday as the Dorothy Vaughn Day of Remembrance and urge all citizens of Portsmouth and the seacoast to observe the occasion by remembering her good works and appreciating with deep gratitude the indelible mark she left on the city through her years of dedication to Portsmouth and its history. Given in my hand and seal in the City of Portsmouth on the sixteenth day of August two thousand and four, Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth.
Thank you, Assistant. I'm going to ask that Priscilla Mullen step forward to accept of the proclamation and maybe say a few words at the podium as to what Strawberry Bank will be doing.
Can I take that?
Yes, gonna give that to you first so you won't forget it. I'm gonna give it to you first, Priscilla, so you won't forget it. It's good seeing you, dear. You've been here for a long time. Yes, say it.
Did I just hear you say?
No, because the people at home can hear you at the podium.
Oh, really?
Yes. That's all right. Don't be bad, though.
Mayor Sorel, members of the City Council, thank you very much for this proclamation in honor of Dorothy Vaughn. I'm not sure what the Strawberry Bank is doing because my connection with historic houses is with the Wentworth Gardner House. But on behalf of Dorothy's friends and also the members of the Wentworth Gardner Tobias Lear Houses Association, I thank you for this proclamation in honor to Dorothy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Priscilla. From what I heard from another woman at Strawberry Bank, they're going to be opening up all of the historic homes in memory of Dorothy Vaughn. That's all I know. I have no dates or anything, but I think it'll probably be this weekend. Okay, now we're down to the acceptance of the minutes for August second, two thousand and four.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We're down to the public comment session. We have just two under the public comment session. The first one is James Horton, thirty-five Elwinag Avenue, and he wants to speak to sidewalks.
I thought I was second, Madam Mayor.
What was that?
I thought I was second.
Uh, yes, but somebody has, oh, somebody's declined.
Okay. I come here to this meeting tonight because I noticed a report that there'd be a bonding issue concerning improvements of our sidewalks and streets. I come to you as a pedestrian who walks around Portsmouth every day of the week, partly for exercise, partly to run errands, and just enjoy the ambience of the city. And so suddenly the subject is on my mind and would I like to make a request of the City Council that when pertinent, that you reconsider our current propensity to install new red brick sidewalks whenever there's a major reconstruction project. I realize this doesn't always happen, but it seems to happen in the center of the city in certain districts which I presume are historical. As I understand it, the rationale is they're historic or decorative, perhaps both. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder, so I won't take issue with the decorative part, but the historical argument strikes me can be questioned. If we push it to its ultimate, we'd be installing muddy paths and wooden planks. The first sidewalk actually was installed in seventeen eighty-seven in Haymarket Square and it was gray paved stones from Durham, not red brick. So, and concrete sidewalks have a long history of their own going back to the late nineteenth century. While they may be historic or decorative, they are certainly not economical, they're not safe, and they're not maintainable. That is, they cost a lot to install, they're very treacherous to walk on, and they simply can't be maintained. They frost heave in the winter and they begin to buckle, the bricks crack, split, just fall out and disappear. And once they're covered with ice, I defy anyone to try walking on them. So I would just ask you whenever it's irrelevant to please reconsider the tendency to put in these red brick sidewalks. The master plan, every master plan since I lived in Portsmouth has called for a better sidewalk system. The Portsmouth Listen deliberations have called for that. It's probably a utopian vision at this point, but nonetheless, I think we should adhere to that vision and take the long-run view and put in sidewalks that'll be here for our children and grandchildren. As I was walking over tonight, I noticed one section of sidewalk right around the corner from my house is dated nineteen thirty, the year I was born. And I defy anyone here to claim that these new red brick sidewalks will be in the same good shape as those nineteen thirty sidewalks are today. So please, let's make it a walkable city rather than a decorated city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker and final speaker is Pon Nidit Yan. No?
Nidit Yan.
I'm getting there.
You're getting there. I'm coming back every year.
Pon wants to speak regarding City Year Opening Day.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and distinguished member of the council. My name is again Pon Nidit Yan and I stand before you this evening as a Portsmouth resident and co-executive director of City Year New Hampshire. At tonight's meeting, you will be discussing a proposal in which I have asked for your permission and for your support of a City Year New Hampshire Opening Day Ceremony on Friday, October first, two thousand and four in Portsmouth Market Square. There would be approximately two hundred community members in attendance at the event. Through your support, the past two years, we have been honored to hold City Year New Hampshire Opening Day at Portsmouth Market Square. I am here again to ask for your continued support of this important event in our organization's fifth anniversary year. Since our founding in October of two thousand, eighty-seven core members have served over a hundred and fifty thousand hours impacting nearly five thousand New Hampshire children. Last year alone, City Year New Hampshire provided over twenty thousand hours of one-on-one tutoring, service learning, and social justice and diversity curriculum to over five hundred youth, a winter vacation camp for hundred and twenty students. We also engaged over two thousand volunteers, planted sixteen gardens, cleaned up thirty-eight neighborhoods and parks, and painted four murals. This year, thirty young leaders, increased number from twenty-four from the last year. We continue to impactfully serve our community. Last year, this venue served as an opportunity for people to take part in this event during their lunch hour in Portsmouth. We continue to see Portsmouth Market Square as the most ideal and welcoming location to hold this inspiring ceremony. On behalf of City Year New Hampshire, we respectfully ask that you grant us permission to hold this special ceremony at Portsmouth Market Square this October first. We also hope that you will consider joining us as our honor guest in celebration of our fifth year anniversary of civic power, active and engaged citizenship, and our pledge to serve America. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Pon, and you do deserve a lot of credit for the hard work that you and the people put into it. Thank you. Right now, that ends the public comment session and now we're looking for...
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilor Hines?
I would like to ask for a suspension of the rules at this time in respect for the good Sisters of St. Charles Orphanage in Rochester so that their request can be addressed. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. We received a request from St. Charles Children, home to hold a race at the, a road race at the Trade Port. This request has been reviewed by officials at the Trade Port, at the Development Authority, and the road race would be on September sixth, two thousand and four. And again, as I've indicated, I've talked to representatives from the Trade Port and they see no problem with this, so I'd recommend that we grant approval.
Very good. Discussion?
Second, and Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry. You just gave the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did I get a second?
Second right here, Your Honor.
John? Okay, yes, John.
I would ask that this be referred to the city manager with power.
Very good. Any other discussion? Everyone ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Thank you very much, Sisters, for coming. We enjoyed having you.
Yes.
Now we are down to the approval of grants and donations, the acceptance of the donations to the Cemetery Committee. Who would like to read that?
Your Honor.
My councilors, yes, Harold?
Your Honor, I move the acceptance, to approve and accept the donations to the Cemetery Committee as listed. That would be thirty-five dollars from Peter and Kathleen Somblicks and the five hundred dollars from Whittaker INC.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. The next one, you want to do the next one, Harold?
She didn't. She didn't both.
Yeah, she did them both at once.
Oh, you did them both at once?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, now we're down to considerations of resolutions and ordinances. The first reading of ordinance amending, Chapter twelve, Article two, International Residential Code, two thousand and three, Section R three one seven, Dwelling Units. What's your wish, councilors?
Your Honor, I move that the City Council passes first reading on this amended ordinance that's submitted and that we have a public hearing and a second reading on September twentieth, which will be our next meeting.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Next one is the first reading of a resolution authorizing bond issue of up to three million dollars for street and sidewalk improvements.
Madam Mayor, move to pass first reading to authorize bonding in the amount of three million dollars for street and sidewalk improvements and schedule a public hearing and adoption at the September twentieth, two thousand and four City Council meeting.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Madam Mayor, maybe we could ask the city manager to, a comment was made about the brick sidewalks in the historic, and maybe we could expand on why those are bricks and the federal grants that we get that require it to be bricks.
What we, if I may, Your Honor, what we've done is, there was a policy that was in conjunction with the Planning Board, the City Council a few years ago, we had, every time we did a project within the historic district, what we were finding, I'll give an example of one is South Street. What we were finding is people wanted to have brick in sidewalks and we had proposed actually on, on South Street to replace those with concrete. And there was a feeling from citizenry through, you know, a lot of the public processes that we had, that those sidewalks should be replaced with brick. So the City Council at the time, we had a policy that was developed that indicated that anything within the historic district would be replaced with brick if there was a combination of the two. For example, on South Street, you had a combination of asphalt, brick, it was a hodgepodge of the type of sidewalks that you had. So the council made a decision that to bring order to the replacement of sidewalks, that we would replace with brick in areas that had had bricked or had been partially bricked. Now, for example, Lincoln Avenue is one of the sidewalks that will be replaced and that is predominantly is, is concrete and will be replaced with concrete. Throughout the city, probably, I would say, anything out of the historic district, I have, along with the Public Works Department, discussed this and with the City Council, we've made a policy decision that we don't replace it with blacktop anymore. What we do is we replace it with concrete. So anything outside the historic commission, we, excuse me, historic district, we replace with concrete. So that really is the way we have our policy right now because as I've indicated before, we had a policy like this. It was very confusing for people. They didn't know, you know, if there was some brick in front of their house and it was partially asphalt and partially concrete, we were proposing to go in with concrete and because it was in the historic area, they felt very strongly, and I think many councilmembers remember those multiple meetings we had with those South Street residents. So that was why the policy was developed.
Very good. Councilor Reynold?
Question? I'm impressed by Mr. Horton's citation of the dating of the concrete sidewalk near his house as being put in in nineteen thirty and still existing. And I, as the owner of a house with a brick driveway, I do have some experience with the problems with brick that he mentions. Is there empirical evidence available, either knowledge within the city now or from associations like the Public Works, you know, the engineers, that the relative lifespan and, and technical merits of certain kinds of concrete, cord versus brick, like how they last?
Well, obviously, concrete will last a heck of a lot longer. It's a lot easier to maintain and certainly myself and the Public Works Department would like to have concrete everywhere. But that's not what the policy is. And we believe that, you know, it is part of our responsibility as city officials to bring these options to not only the City Council but the Planning Board and the residents. And overwhelmingly, there has been a push for brick in historic area, historic district. The evidence, and I think Steve would probably agree, is that concrete is probably a better way to go if, from a functional standpoint. There are, you know, do you want to add anything else, Steve, on that or?
The only thing I would add is that with any material, how it is constructed determines its longevity. I think as Mr. Horton pointed out, there are sidewalks that have been around since the thirties and they're out of concrete. Why? The way that they were constructed, the way they were made, the good base materials underneath. We strive to do the same type of things with any of the materials we use, whether it be hot top or concrete or even brick. Each one has its own problems. Concrete does tend to heave, it seems. You can find uneven joints. Hopefully, they go back down after the frost, but in some cases, they don't. So I think any material has its own inherent problems, but I think as the manager has stated, putting brick in, if you take the account of Court Street, we replaced the sidewalks there with brick. They were brick to begin with, brick that was laid down in the seventeen hundreds, eighteen hundreds. So every kind of sidewalk does last. It depends upon how it's made. Some are better than others, some last longer, in some cases, the way brick is made, it may fall apart. But that has not been our experience with the brick sidewalks we have been putting down. We're not putting brick everywhere, I think as the manager stated, outside the historic district, we use concrete.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Are we ready for the vote?
Sorry, just one more question. Is it possible to say, like on a per foot basis, what the relative cost is, concrete versus brick? Like are we paying two and a half times per foot of sidewalk for brick or? There is a, there's an additional cost, but I think it's about, about twenty-five percent more, Steve. Steve, what would be the, about the difference in the brick?
Piscataquoddy, the food season...
Right.
...has to be more expensive because it is labor intensive. That's what we find, I think, a little more work and they'll get the change. But do you need more specific between the numbers?
Yeah, we can get that. Twenty on average? Twenty, more like twenty-five percent more expensive versus twice as expensive?
Possibly, probably, uh, twenty-five percent or more.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think we're ready to move on to the next one. The first reading of the resolution for a lease authorization for the fire apparatus in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Madam Mayor? Yes, Councilor? Move to pass first reading for replacement to fire engine five, the lease of a seventy-five aerial ladder in the amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and schedule a public hearing and adoption at the September twentieth City Council meeting.
Second.
Very good discussion. Our Councilor, what, yes?
Madam Mayor, the, if we could have the city manager explain this, that the lease is not, we're not really leasing it, we're buying it.
Yeah, if we could explain the master lease to the municipality as... Well, thank you, if I might, Your Honor?
Right.
I'll proceed. We're not, as the Assistant Mayor indicated, we are not leasing the vehicle like you would typically lease a, a car. What we're doing is really borrowing money at a rate that's probably going to be around that three percent short-term type of interest and that's paper that we will be selling to a financial institution as we would any other. So for example, if we happen to buy the, the vehicle from X Fire Engine Company, then we actually have got, we've received the money from the financial institution, we actually paid for that, and we pay the financial institution over a five-year period. Could that explain it?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to ask the city manager that before the public hearing, I personally would like to see a mini-report from the fire chief. I mean, this is really a state-of-the-art piece of equipment. If you read your memo, you know, it talks about a four-hundred gallon, two-thousand gallon per minute pumper. It's a seventy-five foot, three-section aerial ladder and pre-piped aerial waterway. It has a fifteen kilowatt hydraulic generator. So this is really a state-of-the-art piece of equipment. But I'm kind of worried that on our side streets such as Porter, Fleet, Church, Penn Hollow, Sheaf, will these outriggers be able to be extended to set this piece of equipment in place? Now, we don't want to make a mistake like we did one year and we wasn't able to set it up on Fleet Street in case we had to fight a fire at fifty-five Congress.
If I might, Your Honor, may I speak to that issue? The deputy fire chief, Griswold, is here and if you might want to speak to that, Deputy?
It's always possible that there may be locations within the city where it's not possible to set up an outrigger. That, it happens with the existing apparatus we have, that's always a possibility. However, we use tactical procedures to avoid, you know, setting the truck up in those areas. I'm not exactly sure what the span of the outriggers are. I'm sure that they're no greater than the existing trucks. So what we, what we're replacing is actually a, a truck with outriggers which we've never had any problems with. I don't, I don't see it as ever having been a problem in the past. I'm not...
And you're sure this replacement will possibly be the same amount of expansion for the outriggers?
I'm not sure, but it, this particular truck is smaller. The ladder is shorter than the hundred-and-nine-foot aerial which we are currently using as an aerial, so it's going to be less extension than that has and that has been operating successfully for about five years.
The only thing I'm concerned with, John, is we've got fifty-five, we've got Porter Street condos, very narrow. If we have to fight a fire at the Porter Street condos, you know, there's not much room. Once they put the curb and once the bank is developed and now we've got shrubbery and curbing at the condos, so, you know, there's not much room for the outriggers and that's quite...
The ladder is shorter than the hundred-and-nine-foot aerial, which we are currently using as an aerial. So, it's going to be less extension than that has. And that has been operating successfully for about five years.
The only thing I'm concerned with, John, is we've got fifty-five, uh, we've got Porter Street condos, very narrow. If we have to fight a fire at the Porter Street condos, you know, there's not much room. Once they put the curb and once the bank is developed, and now we've got shrubbery and curbing at the condos, so, you know, there's not much room for the outriggers. And that's quite a height in building construction right there at the Porter Street condos.
Right, well, you don't have to, I mean, the outriggers are capable of being set on soft material. They come with plates that expand this footprint, so you can, you can set them on a sidewalk or you can actually set them on soft ground to stabilize the truck. So, if you can, if you can reach a point where even if one side were on the street and the other side were on the sidewalk, uh, you know, they can be unevenly set. You can have one outrigger high, one outrigger low. As long as the truck is level, it doesn't matter. So, it really shouldn't be an issue.
Just a concern, because years ago, there was sort of a mistake made in testing it in some of the side streets, it was a problem. But that was an older truck, and it was years ago. I'm sure they perfected it, um, more secure now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did away with horses, too.
Chief, if I might, your honor, what we'll do for the public hearing on the, on the twentieth is that we're going to do a short PowerPoint on streets and sidewalks, people, so they see what we're, we've done in some of the streets that we're going to be doing. And I'm sure the deputy chief and the chief will be able to put a short PowerPoint together for, uh, for the fire apparatus as well.
Very good, thank you, John. Uh, presentations and questions? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just with the other night. Uh, we'll move the question. Uh, seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Presentations and considerations of written communications and petitions. A letter from Paul Nichon, uh, City Year, New Hampshire, requesting permission to hold the City Year, New Hampshire, opening day on Friday, October first, two thousand four, from twelve P.M. to one P.M. in Market Square.
Your honor, move to the city manager with power.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. A letter from Nicole Gregg, Chamber of Commerce, requesting permission to use the Connie Bean Community Center to host the New Hampshire Film Expo on Saturday, October sixteenth, two thousand four, from eight A.M. to seven P.M. What you wish, Councilor?
Move to the city manager with power.
Second. Uh, discussion, yes, Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes, I hope the city manager takes in consideration, if this trade show is a money-making proposition, then the charge will be.
I, that's a good question, council. If I might, your honor, I'd like to speak to that. I was assured by the Chamber of Commerce that this is a nonprofit. That is the condition. If they were for profit, that would not be allowable. But she assured me they're a nonprofit.
Thank you, John.
All right. Glad I got you next to me tonight, Kelly. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. A letter from Pamela Thonhill, American Diabetes Association, requesting permission to hold the annual America's Walk for Diabetes on Saturday, October sixteenth, two thousand four. Uh, how about Mr. Greeney, Councilor Foley down there?
I would be happy to move that to the city manager with power.
Very good. Um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. A letter from Stephen Peterson, um, big a dash, is that how you pronounce?
Big dash.
Big dash. Uh, the Arashriners requesting permission to hold a parade on Saturday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand five, at one P.M. We'll have Councilor Whitehouse make the motion.
Your honor, I move to the city manager with power.
Second.
All right.
Your honor, if I might, um, I, I don't have, I would ask that the council maybe take a look at this and allow me to bring a report back, because I think I'm more prudent to do that. I, we, I'd like to meet with the, the, the people that are organizing. It is, as you can see, uh, going to be a major event. And, um, so, it would probably, they're indicating that the parade would be held approximately at one P.M. It would be over approximately one to two hours. And I just want to make sure we have the roots down and, uh, and, uh, I assume, uh, I don't know if you, if we can get the people in, I can get a report back for the twentieth. But I don't see a problem, it's just that I'd like to find out what the resources required relative to this issue.
Very good. Councilor Whitehouse?
Um, if you would like to meet with Mr. Stephen Peterson, I can make arrangements for you.
So, sure, what I'll do is I'll have a report back on the twentieth to the city council.
So, do we need to amend the motion to refer to the city manager for a report back?
Yes, that would be helpful.
Yep. So moved.
Second. All ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
So now we did the amendment.
Now we have to move.
Uh, right, okay. Now we've got to move the amendment.
Not the main motion.
I mean, the main motion, sorry. We got a first and a second on that, huh? I mean, to, yeah, a motion to accept. Yeah, okay.
It was the original motion to accept.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. A letter from Wendy Seagat, Seacoast Mental Health Center, Inc., requesting permission to hold the seventh annual Bridges for Friendship Take Ten K Road Race on Saturday, October sixteenth, two thousand four, at ten A.M. What is you wish, Councilor?
Move to the city manager with power. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We're down to the city manager now, and John has three items that require action. John?
Yes, thank you, your honor. The first item is regarding salary adjustment for an unclassified position of parking enforcement officer. The Parking Enforcement Division, a few years ago, was moved from the Police Department to the Public Works Department under the Director of Parking and Transportation. And as such, during these last round of negotiations, the parking enforcement officers were taken out of the Police Civilians Association Collective Barring Agreement. As a result of them coming out of the collective barring agreement, they are no longer unionized and are in an unclassified, um, situation. It is my recommendation that we provide the parking enforcement officers the same pay raise that we did the unionized membership. I'd like to note that we do not have any full-time parking enforcement officers at this time. They're all part-time, and as a result, they stay at Step A. All part-time employees stay at the Step A, do not increase their steps. So, my recommendation would be for the city council to approve the, the, um, the rate of pay as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved, your honor. Second.
Uh, very good discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, the next item is that I would ask your indulgence on rescheduling a public hearing that was scheduled for tonight to September twentieth for the amendment to Chapter ten, Article two, Section ten dash two oh two to rezone Portsmouth Circle Business Center, the general business. Unfortunately, we had a clerical error, and the legal notice is not published. Uh, I'd ask that you reschedule this to September twentieth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Uh, thank you, your honor. Uh, the next item, I will defer to the city attorney. It's regarding an agreement on a paper street.
Your honor, in May, Flightline Sunoco, owned by Aranosian Oil Company, received site plan approval to conduct certain improvements, uh, to their property. Uh, the site plan showed that a portion of what was formerly Greenland Road back before the construction of Route ninety-five and the relocation of Greenland Road into Route one-on-one, uh, in fact, passes through what is now, uh, a portion of their parking lot. Uh, vehicles pass over it every day, right now have for some time. Uh, the planning board had the concern that this matter be clarified before, uh, the building permit be issued for the work to begin. Uh, the planning board didn't have any particular resolution of the matter in mind. They just wanted the situation resolved to the satisfaction of the city council. What we are proposing is that the council authorize the city manager to enter into a joint use agreement regarding to that portion of the old Greenland Road, um, which is being used now and has been used for some time. Basically, the joint use agreement would say that the city of Portsmouth has no objection to Aranosian Oil using that portion of Greenland Road, and it shows on a photograph in the packet, um, as long as the city doesn't have any paramount need to use it. Um, the agreement would also contain, uh, the terms and conditions the city manager felt was appropriate and was able to negotiate with Aranosian. Um, the reason we are hoping that you will ask on this tonight is that there is not another city council meeting for a month, and, uh, the construction season is running. And if Aranosian is going to begin the project this year, we really need to get moving.
If I might add, the other item that, when we enter into this agreement, of course, there'll be something I'll be discussing if approved, but we'll be wanting to put in the agreement certain, um, conditions if, uh, the, there, if there are violations to our zoning or any of the conditions of the, uh, of the approvals, such as trucks, overnight stays and the like, that we would be able to, um, um, make this agreement null and void and that we would block off that section. Um, I, I just think that it's going to be important to make sure. This is, this will give us an opportunity to have a, an additional enforcement opportunity in this area as well.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move to the city manager the authority to negotiate and execute an agreement with, uh, Aranosian, what is it?
Aranosian.
Aranosian Oil Company to allow joint use of a portion of old Greenland Road to satisfy planning board conditions in May twentieth, two thousand four.
Second.
Discussion?
If I may speak to this, uh?
Yes, you may.
You may look at the, the second, the picture. This came before traffic and safety, and it is going to be a more retail use. That existing building comes down, and the, um, area actually is condensed considerably, and there's no overnight parking. And I think there were, like, very, very few spaces for, even if they wanted to park there for a short period of time, uh, the very limited spaces. So, it was a much, it's not a, the, the type truck stop that you have now. And I, I think there was a car wash hooked on to that, uh, on the side. So, it really is for the convenience of the consumer and not the truckers', uh, and I think that's their intent. So, uh, it, it really looked like a great improvement, and it, it looks a lot better coming into the city.
Uh, Councilor Arenas?
Just a clarifying question. There aren't going to be any structures constructed on this joint use area, are there?
No, there will be no structures constructed in the joint use area.
The assistant mayor is assuming the chair and recognizes the mayor.
Well, everyone knows sitting around this table, my feelings on paper streets. They're ours, I don't like to give them away. But in this particular case, I will, if they control their trucks out there. Has the cement wall gone up, the area? Yet?
No.
So, they can't back into the wetlands?
Your honor, this would be part of a whole new reconstruction. The reconstruction cannot commence until all approvals are in place and that they're, such as this. So, they have not started any reconstruction up there.
But the promise is there that those barriers are going up so they can't back the trucks into the wetlands.
That's, that's correct, your honor, that's correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Foley?
Mr. Assistant Mayor, I'd just add, um, in the extensive deliberations in the planning board, a comprehensive plan was offered by the applicant. And I certainly am satisfied that the barriers to which the mayor refers will be taken care of in a way that will benefit the use of the property in a manner that greatly exceeds the way it is being used presently. I think it's a good thing. And I certainly think the utilization of the paper street in this fashion with the agreement, uh, that is going to be drafted is, is a fine use of a, of a paper street in this particular instance, and so I will support it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Turn the gavel back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor.
Uh, your honor, just one other item that I just want to bring your attention. As you are aware, our, um, local Little League team did make it to the, uh, to Bristol and was in the finals for the region. I did get a couple emails today from individuals that felt that we should look at doing something similar to what Ry did last year with a couple signs as we entered into the community that indicate that our Little League team was the two thousand four state champions. I don't hear any objection. I'll work with the Public Works Department to achieve that.
Please do.
Yes, no objection.
Exciting game on Saturday.
Very nice, wasn't it?
And also, I was talking, uh, with the coaches, and we will, as the council, on September twentieth, uh, be giving out a mayor's awards and their shirts. So, we'll make a big deal of that, maybe set up a little, um, cookie and cold drink stand out there, too. Might as well spend my money while I got it. No, but we really want to recognize. We really want to recognize the kids, and they're Portsmouth kids, and they deserve it. They did a great job.
It was very exciting to watch them on TV.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. That's all I have, your honor, unless there are questions from the city council.
Anything else of John? No, okay. Now, we're on to the mayor. We'll pass the gavel back. Um...
Assistant mayor has the chair and recognizes the mayor.
All right, I'd like to, uh, have you accept donations to the Coalition Legal Fund. Uh, Carroll Town, uh, Carroll, uh, two thousand dollars. Um, Meredith Village, fifteen hundred dollars, and that's it right now.
So moved.
Is that Meredith or Bridge Water?
Bridge Water.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking up the check. I was going to say, I didn't think we had a...
Okay, so we have a motion to accept those from the mayor. Do I hear a second?
Second, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, are you doing the Louise Tillman Fund, mayor?
Um, I just want the people to realize on this coalition thing, um, the checks are coming in. The people are excited, and they are supporting us as far as the coalition of communities go.
Can I just say that we're going to do Louise Tillman?
No, somebody else can do her.
Okay, all right.
Uh, the acceptance of a GPCF grant from Louise H. Tillman Fund. Councilors who would like to ma, uh, Steve, how about you down the corner?
Would like to move to accept the grant for eighteen hundred dollars, uh, from the Louise H. Tillman Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. This is something else that I just want to say a quick thing on. Here's your cemetery committee. I have never, ever put our committee on that has been so ferocious and out there, really doing a great job. They really are. All right, the next one is the Blue Ribbon Committee on the African Burial Ground Members. I'm going to pass this, uh, to Councilor Heinz as he has been made the chairperson. John?
Thank you, your honor. I'm very proud to announce the Blue Ribbon Committee on, the mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee on the African burial ground. We have an outstanding group of volunteers, and they are as follows. Uh, Mary Bailey, Valerie Cunningham, Vernis Jackson, Laura Pantolakis, James Splain, Attorney John McGee, Steve Parkinson is an ex-officio, as well as Suzanne Woodland and John Burke. All three of these people are there for their expertise in particular areas that we will have to deal with, uh, and are not voting members of this committee. So, I hope, hope that the council approves the mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee, and I'm very happy to work with them.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Resignation, I was very saddened to receive this resignation from the Conservation Commission. Resignation, I was very saddened to receive this resignation from the Conservation Commission by Alan Sturgis.
Your honor, would you please read the letter, please, read it?
What was that?
Would you please read the letter, please?
Go right ahead, Harold, I'm losing my voice. Go right ahead.
Yeah, sure, and I think it's very important, it's only a graph, brief graph. Uh, Dear Mayor Sorrell, the time has come for me to leave the Conservation Commission. I was first appointed to the commission in nineteen eighty-five. I have been its chairman since nineteen eighty-eight. That is quite a long enough, I think. Consequently, I hereby tender my resignation from the Conservation Commission. That resignation to be effective as of August twelfth, two thousand four. Sincerely yours, Alan Sturgis.
Move to accept with regret?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. I will be doing a big thing for Alan in September at our next council meeting. He each me, I worked with him, he, he is one of the most special people that I have ever met in my lifetime, when it comes to conservation. So, um, hopefully, we can replace him, but the next candidate, um, for an appointment is Sky Mar at, uh, Twenty Maritime Cottage Road. Now, Sky came in to me back in December of two thousand three, asking if there was ever a vacancy on the, uh, on the Conservation Commission, she would be interested. Now, she was the one that worked with many of my, uh, Blue Ribbon Committee on the Great Blog. She, she's a marvelous person, I just want you to think about it, but I don't want anyone to say, gosh, how did that get on here tonight? That woman has been waiting since two thousand three. We'll be voting on that September twentieth.
That's a marvelous selection, Madam Mayor.
She is a marvelous person, to be voted on tonight, um, for planning board, and I'm going to ask, uh, Councilor Grasso to speak on this.
Thank you, your honor. Um, as you know, this nominee, John Ritchie, is a m- a member of my family. I'm very proud of John, and I would like to make a motion to, um, have him, um, become a, a permanent member of the planning board. I would, uh, at this time, I'd like the councilors to know that, uh, he is my nephew, and if anyone objects to my voting on this, um, I would step aside. But as I, I conferred with the city attorney, and I don't see any conflict in his sitting in that, uh, position.
Any question? That Joanne can vote for him. Very good.
And I'd like to move that John Ritchie be appointed as a permanent member of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The next one is a memorandum, and I'm going to let, um, our planning board rep read the letter.
On August fifth, thank you, Madam Mayor, on August fifth, the planning board designated, uh, its chair, Ken Smith, to represent the planning board as a member of the Historic District Commission. The board's current representative, Paige Roberts, had recently resigned from the planning board, thereby creating a vacancy on both the planning board and the Historic District Commission. Uh, pursuant to city requirements, this proposed amendment would need confirmation by the city council, and I can think of, you know, Mr. Smith is certainly well qualified to serve in this capacity, uh, for that period of time, and, um, I think it's an appropriate appointment and, uh, useful to the city. And so I would support it, in fact, I'll make the motion that we accept that.
Second. Your honor, I'd like to say that he has in the past, um, during my tenure on the, uh, HGC, served as their mem- uh, as their liaison, uh, so he's had his experience in the role.
Great.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, having, uh, watched that, I believe that Ken's agreed to do this, uh, fill a vacancy until January first, and so that takes care of the un, uh, the vacancy that Paige Roberts had done, so, just so he stays married at home, just until January first.
I, I think that's, I, I agree, I think Alex is absolutely right, specified, so we'd wanna make sure that we look again.
Right, very good. Uh, all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Also, I'd like to say, um, we do now have a vacancy for an alternate on the planning board. I want the people out there that were talking about getting on board to come forward, fill out your applications, come up to the mayor's office. I keep them on my, in my folder, and whenever something comes along, I call them. So, I, I don't wanna hear anybody saying, there's never a vacancy, so I am announcing it tonight.
Your honor?
Yes.
Could we just make a, make note or make mention of the fact that, um, the application for positions on boards and commissions is available on the city's website, right? Downloadable?
Right.
At the website?
And I believe Kelly always has.
We always have them in the city clerk's office as well.
And I love them to come up to the mayor's office, because that way I get to meet them. And, and another thing is, we have changed our applications, they are now two pages long. Uh, now we're down to, um, oh, boy, you haven't got anything, Eric, tonight?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we're down to miscellaneous and untoward business, and Harold, you haven't done any tonight?
No, 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 under your report, ma'am, your honor, I think you should mention publicly the change of date for the candidates' night, it's gone from August thirty-first to September seventh. You should mention that publicly, because it's very important.
And that was the reason, because the Republican, um, convention is going on, on August thirty-first. So it kinda tangled up things a little bit, but everybody's gonna be on board, and I hope each counselor will be there to have some good questions.
Be held in the council chambers.
In the council chambers right here, it'll be televised, it also will be taped. Uh, Clear Channel, Roger Wood will be the M.C. We're not going to have any intermediates in there asking the candidates' questions, it is just going to be the candidates talking to the people.
And the time is seven to eight thirty?
Seven to eight thirty, and if any of the counselors want a reserved seat, uh, let Pat Remick know, okay?
Thank you.
All right, very good. Um, other than that, miscellaneous, we already-
Move, move, adjutant. Move for your adjutant, your honor?
All right.
Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.